Hayes? Hesslinger?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Bulo?
Mughalbauer?
Here. Well, it looks like we're gonna do the pledge. I'll lead us in that.
Do it. Fill us a little bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I should have given myself the same instructions I give the students when they come here. We're here for the budget hearing and budget workshop, so we have a presentation of the 2024 budget by Finance Director Van Gompul and City Manager Roloff. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just gonna turn over to Russ. He was just joking. He's doing the presentation. But this is very similar to a presentation we actually did as a courtesy to the Chamber of Commerce. So they've seen some of this, and we've updated it following last week's budget workshop to be a little more reflective of some of the comments and discussion we had at the previous meeting. So Russ, if you want to take it over, that'd be great.
Okay, so just kind of quick, wanted to do a brief overview of 2024 annual operating budget. First of all, the first slide is just a friendly reminder. In my office, we get a lot of calls when we send out our tax bills. As you might be aware, the city of Oshkosh is responsible for about 40% of the tax dollars that actually go out to our residents. So the city council is in charge of and has direct control in adopting a levy that represents about 40% of the tax bills that go out. The school district has another 40%, the county 17, and Fox Valley Technical College 3%. So just a friendly reminder of when the tax bills go out, we're talking about the portion that deals with the city of Oshkosh. So if we look at the entire budget, including the general fund and all our other funds, and this is a recap and a summary of all of our sources of funds, 36% of our funds come in from property tax revenue, and I don't think that's a surprising number. Intergovernmental revenue is about 16%. We have a small slice for license and permits, less than a percent. Fines and forfeitures, less than a percent. Charges for services, about 5%. Library has some miscellaneous revenue, again, less than 1%. Our enterprise funds is about a third of the pie. We charge out internal service charges for other operations and functions, and that's about 4% miscellaneous revenue, another 5%.
Russ, could you explain what enterprise funds are for the crowd?
Oh, sure. The crowd, for those listening, enterprise funds is basically our water, sewer, stormwater fees. It's, they're accounted more like businesses, so they're called an enterprise fund, but it's really our water utility, our sewer utility, stormwater utility. We also have inspection services, transit are also enterprise funds as well. So where does the money go? The general fund takes up about 33%, or about a third. The enterprise funds that we just talked about is over a third, just a little bit over a third. Debt service is about 8%. Capital projects, 2%. Our special revenue funds, and that's the area where we account for specific purposes. Prime examples of special revenue funds are like our library, our museum, everything that we keep outside of our general operation. Tax increment districts, about 5%, and our internal service funds are about 11%. So that's where, in the big picture, where all the money's going. So if we look at our levy, half of the levy goes to the general fund, and the general fund accounts for all of our operations. About 30% goes to debt service. That's paying principal and interest payments on financing that we've issued in the past. The library has about 6%. Garbage collection, that percentage is not up there. It's a small percentage. Equipment funds, 2.5, street lighting, 2, museum, another 2. Go transit, some of our funding goes towards our transit operations. Small slice go to senior services, small slice to the cemetery, park, and the amphitheater. So all those little slices make up the rest. Again, I apologize for the numbers. The big thing on this slide is we actually do it, and are proposing a tax levy of just over $47 million, and an increase of $1.8 million, or about 4% from last year. And you can see some of the prior history, and it actually has a dollar amount of where all the levy dollars are going. We kind of walked through some of that in our work sessions with the council. So if we just look at operations in our general fund, which again counts for all our day-to-day operations, when you look at the general fund, about half of that is coming in from tax levy dollars. Just over a third, almost 33 or 34% from intergovernmental revenues. That's money coming in from primarily the state of Wisconsin, but we get some other things like transportation aids and some other things paid by the state of Wisconsin. License and permits is about a percent. Fines and forfeitures, a percent. Charges are about 12%. Interdepartmental charges, about 1.2. Miscellaneous revenues, about 4.4, and just some other financing sources. So that's all the revenue from the general fund. One thing we kind of take a look at is the historical perspective of revenue. In 2024, we saw our first increase in shared revenue. That's an intergovernmental revenue payment made by the state of Wisconsin. We got about $2 million more, but as we talked about, shared revenue, that puts us about equivalent to 1992 as far as our... This graph doesn't go back that far, but as far as a dollar amount. The general fund levy, because of operating costs, continued to increase. Have seen more significant increases in the past, and then the other revenues make up the total of the general fund revenue. On the expenditure side, it's no secret, but 60% of our general fund goes to public safety. That's police and fire. 15% is general government, 10% public works. Transportation is about 2%, culture and recreation, 6%. 4% goes to conservation and development, and the other 4% is just unclassified. It's miscellaneous things that are occurring within our general fund. When you look at our tax rate, and we talked about this in our workshop a little bit, but our assessed valuation's going up just slightly, by 0.2%. We do have an increase of about $7 million, but the total assessed valuation in our entire community is $3.7 billion. If you divide that by the levy, we'd get a tax rate of $12.57, which is a 46 cent increase. Our equalized value grew at about 9.5%. So that's up to $5.4 billion. The big thing here is our ratio should be within plus or minus 10%. So we should be between 90 and 110. We've been below 90 for four years. We were at 92% in 2020. We're down to 69%. So if you look at what we have assessed on the books, it's basically 69% of what a piece of property would sell for. So that gap is increasing, and because of that, we're working on our revaluation that should come into play in 2024, for the 2024 taxes for 25 budget. So that's what's important to note from this slide. Again, from a visual perspective, we were pretty much right on as far as assessed the equalized value, still about 2016. In 2016, market conditions have increased our equalized value, but our assessed valuations remained relatively flat. So that's kind of an eye-opening picture. So what does that mean for taxes? This is just an illustration to show you how this all works. City council will adopt a levy, and that levy then is divided by the assessed valuation without tax increment districts, or TIFs. And that comes up to a mil rate per thousand. So in this example, the 23 tax rate, these are fictitious numbers, but it's just used for illustration purposes. If you had a $40 million levy and a $3.5 billion valuation, you'd have a tax rate of 1143. Now, if that changed by 5%, so we increased the levy by 5% and increased the value by 5%, the tax rate would remain the same. So, you know, it's just a mathematical formula of the levy divided by the value. But if we're talking about revaluations, and this comes to play as we start educating the public on the revaluation process, if we're at 69% of current market conditions, so if we would increase our assessed valuation by 30% and we kept the levy the same, so that example that I just showed you in 2023, where we had $40 million in levy, divided by $3.5 billion in value, would be 1143. Now, if you kept the levy the same in 2024, but the valuation increased by 30%, the rate would go down by 30%, or the rate would go from 1143 to 879. So that's important to keep in mind as you look into the adoption of levy next year. So if you keep the levy relatively in check, your rate will go down. This is just a quick picture of our equalized and assessed tax rates. Actually, the equalized rate is going down from $9.09 to $8.70, but the assessed rate is actually going up because, again, the equalized value is increasing at a faster rate than our assessed value. So on a typical house, if a house in Oshkosh sold for $216,000, we would have it on the books at $150,000 right now. So that's that 69% ratio that we're talking about. In 2024, under this proposed budget, our city taxes would go up to $1,875 for an annual basis. That's an increase of $57.74. If you look at it as a monthly cost, divide that 1,875 by 12, you'd come up to $156.28, or about $5 per month, $5.73 a month. Looked like the city manager was gonna say something.
Nope, just admiring all the numbers.
Okay. So that $156 a month, this is what services we're providing to our residents. It's no secret, most of it's going towards debt service, $46 a month, $46.58 a month for debt service. Police and fire, $20 some dollars a month. Public works, $10 a month. Library, $10.70. General government, $10.00. Garbage collection, transportation and transit. Street lighting, capital projects, parks, museum, community development, senior services, cemetery, and all others. So that's basically where that monthly amounts are going to. So I think that concludes my quick presentation. I don't know if there's specific questions, or if you want me to go back to the slide. So part of the state process then is to have this public hearing that we have going on this evening. I'm not sure if there's any questions from the public, but Mr. Mayor, now would be a time to entertain any comments from the public if there are.
Yep. At that point, what we'll do is we'll consider the public hearing open for the 2024 city budget. Is this something I gotta, like, call three times, or does it just open and then it just kind of closed?
I think appropriate to call three times.
Just wanted to make sure.
As we similarly do with other public hearings.
Okay. Seeing there is nobody in the audience, for those that are listening at home, there is nobody here to speak to us this evening on this, but public hearing for the 2024 city budget, that'll be the second time it's called. Third and final time, public hearing regarding the 2024 city budget. Seeing as no one's here, we'll close the public hearing and move into the workshop setting. So direction to staff in preparation for the 2024 budget and the CIP plan for next Tuesday's council meeting. Kind of as a reminder to council, by the time we wrap up this meeting, staff would prefer that we've given them our final, any final instructions so that they can prepare the necessary documents, have them prepared Friday for publication, and then Tuesday night's approval. It's accounting, and the finance team prefers to work on the numbers ahead of time instead of trying to do it on the fly that night if we can avoid it, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good, a fair comment, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've started working on the resolution now with the current numbers because I didn't hear a lot of questions or comments from council members during the workshop. Again, we had those workshops in October 30th and 31st. So right now, I have the draft prepared to be included in your packets for next Tuesday's city council meeting with the numbers that was discussed as part of our work sessions and then what I presented this evening.
City Manager Roloff, any comments, anything else you want to add?
I guess the only thing is, you know, we did have some discussions at the workshops about the capital improvement plan and the ARPA money. And, you know, certainly, we're prepared to hold off on the project that was identified for ARPA funding, the FERNow. We did talk among staff about a way to, you know, keep our options open for what we borrow for and really wait until we're on the cusp of borrowing, doing our 2024 borrowing, at which time we can kind of get a feel for, you know, what other projects might be eligible to use up the ARPA money. Our goal is to have all of the 75% infrastructure ARPA funds committed by July, so we've got, we're well within our, the federal imposed deadline. The non-infrastructure funds, you know, you're gonna have something on the agenda probably over the next few meetings to use a portion of that. And then we'll probably have some discussions about how we use the remainder of those funds. But the CIP, you know, I could tell from the discussion that it was hold off on FERNow for the time being, but we'll be ready by mid-year, really prior to mid-year because we usually do the borrowing about June or something like that. So by June, I think we'll have a recommendation on how to use the balance of the ARPA funds and figure out what we're gonna do with the borrowing for 2024.
Sure.
Yeah, if there was any specific recommendations on unspent ARPA funds, you know, if we know a little bit sooner because staff starts working with our financial advisors to prepare the potential debt issuance. So I'm, I was actually a little bit more conservative and was hoping that maybe by, you know, March or April timeframe, that we would have a decision on what projects might be included in our debt issuance and what projects might not. When you get the CIP resolution, there'll be a summary of what we intend to borrow for right now and what we intend to finance through ARPA. There'll actually be three resolutions next week on the agenda. One is to adopt the levy. One is to adopt the 2024 projects in the CIP, which actually, we ask for council's consideration to make that a formal appropriation of dollars. And so that'll be presented as a separate resolution, and then the third resolution would be taking those projects that we identified as potential ARPA projects, less the FERNow, and actually have that appropriated. So that gives staff the ability to enter into contracts and do those purchases subject to your approval on the appropriations.
Okay. Any questions on any of that so far?
Just process or?
What's that?
Just process questions?
Oh, no, just wondering if there's any on that, but if we can go on anything else you want to at this time, too.
Well, I mean, the big thing hanging out there, I think, still in the CIP is the 432, 250 unfunded police fleet vehicle. So I'm curious to hear from my colleagues if there is. I know that at the budget hearing, Chief Smith had suggested that portion of that, I think he said 50%, but you can correct me, chief, would go a long way. And I'm just curious to hear what my colleagues have to think about that concept of funding a portion of that in 2024, perhaps with the operating surpluses where my mind goes as opposed to taking out more debt for it. But I'm curious to hear what city staff has to say about that and what my colleagues have to say about it.
Well, the resolution that I'm preparing to present to you for the next city council meeting includes, I think it was like 200... I was looking at my notes. Yes. Roughly five vehicles, so we, not roughly, exactly five vehicles, not 4.8, exactly five vehicles, and we thought that that was, would get the department off to a good start on that program, and we would be allocating some ARPA funds. So thanks for...
Okay, so that's something that you're in favor of, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, we discussed that with chief, and we just, you know, and I think we still have some... We still leave FERNow open for discussion because I think council is gonna need time to hear more about that, as well as what other opportunities are out there. We identified some projects that might be eligible for some grant funds, not related to FERNow, just in the CIP. And before we borrow, we'll know those types of things, and then we'll be able to come back to you and say, we've shuffled some things around, and we've identified the projects that will exhaust the ARPA funds.
Yeah, so the resolution, as it's drafted and would, I'm anticipating be in your packet, would include that, 200 and some thousand dollars. There's also, I'm not trying to jump ahead, but as long as you're talking about ARPA projects, one of the projects in our 2023 CIP was to help provide facilities to create the opportunity for the Sawyer Street to be used as a training center and the command staff for the fire department. That caused us to, number one, look at a storage facility for the museum and some of the city clerk activities, and we purchased property on Irving Street for that, which was a little bit cheaper than building new. But on your agenda next week will be a bid for your consideration about constructing a facility for the police vehicles and police storage needs. That came in a little bit over budget, so we're recommending to council that another $100,000 be used towards that. And if we use that, we would have about $2.3 million left in ARPA. Don't hold me to it. It's approximate number as not committed at this point in time. And I would ask that you consider that prior, possibly by springtime of 2024.
And is that 2.3, is that total, or is that the...
That's just the infrastructure section.
Sure.
The city manager and myself have talked about what's left from the nonprofit.
Sure.
And that's gonna be a discussion for another time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm supportive of doing what you're doing, whether it's, quite honestly, whether it's the ARPA or whether it was surplus, the general fund. I would have been comfortable either way, quite honestly. So I'm comfortable with that. I don't know if there's any other comments on it, but yep.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I think the conversation that we had with the chief was pretty sobering, for me, anyway. Learning the amount of calls, the fentanyl, the beating up other chiefs to try to get people, and obviously recruit and try to retain people, and of course, you have to make them happy, and that takes money. I'm not excited about spending the money, but, you know, this is what we do. We serve and protect, and the police department protects us. So, you know, I certainly, as I said at the budget workshop, I don't, I don't want to sit and pick apart a police or fire budget. I mean, we trust these, I trust these people, I'm sure everyone else does, too. So I think those funds would probably be well spent.
One of the things that I'm very pleased about with the shared revenue reform is that now there's a built-in growth factor. So to the degree we have other needs that didn't get met in this budget. I mean, there's, there are a lot of needs that we identified, but the fact that we have a growth factor with shared revenue is we're not gonna always be relying on property taxes to fill those voids. So, you know, as we have discussions about the 2025 budget a year from now, if we can ever have a discussion about budget where we can actually talk almost like we're talking in a two-year budget mode, we're thinking much farther ahead. We're gonna have good discussions during our strategic planning retreat, and we'll be able to identify how we can fund some of these things. Frankly, we haven't been able to have a discussion in the past, but there's a growth factor. We already know what our shared revenue is gonna be. I'd say plus or minus $100,000 for the '25 budget, which gives us so much more relief that as we prepare, as we're giving you a presentation July of next year, our confidence level, at least on what the numbers will be, will be so much better. And I think that that has helped a great deal, and it'll continue to be that way.
In regards to some other unfunded CIP things in the to be determined area, it's page 447, if anybody wants to turn to it, but besides the police vehicles, there was the Pioneer River Walk, which also had some, that was the ARPA funding thing that got removed as well earlier in the process. But there still is a few other unfunded CIP things. Sometimes we don't talk about these a little bit, and I didn't know... City Manager Roloff, it's about a quarter million dollars worth between some fire equipment needs, some facility needs, planning, some funds for planning for Jackson Corridor. So those total just under $250,000. Not sure, thoughts on those priorities? If you had interest in trying to use cash reserves still to try to fund those instead of using debt? I guess thoughts on that in terms of, you know, that you want to share with us?
At this time, if we don't fund them, I'm comfortable living with that, with the consequences of those. But at the same time, I talk to the department heads on a regular basis about changing needs. And we also look for opportunities on savings. To the degree we have those, then we can talk about those. You know, like something like the grand, the seat replacement, that may very well get folded into their fundraising effort. Then it just gets blended into something else. So we're gonna look for opportunities, but at this time, I'm not gonna recommend anything be funded. And they're there, so it's on your radar, but we're not gonna do anything with them at this time.
Okay.
And Kelly hasn't given up on the River Walk, even though that's the biggest one, but she's pursuing grants that will be, you know, a possibility. And if we come back to you with a grant, you'll be able to say, we told you so. So, and that's okay with us, too.
No, and to touch on that subject a little bit, I know whether it was that project, the River Walk section, or even FERNow Ave, you know, we know that these things have an importance factor for, not only to the departments, but for the city. It's to keep us moving forward. You know, I think for the funding source that we have available, that staff wanted to use, it was just a difference of opinions for timing. And as you kind of alluded to earlier, you know, in six months, in April, we're gonna know a little bit more about some of the other things on the horizon, and we can make some better informed decisions. And I will be the first one to support a River Walk with a lovely grant from the state. If we're so lucky to get one, I'll be the first one to suggest the funding source. I know that, so. And I appreciate all the efforts on those projects and still keeping them, you know, keeping them on the forefront, keeping them important in front of us, so. You go right ahead.
Yeah, so I echo a few sentiments there. I think my primary decision around kind of keeping those projects on hold was we have the Clearwells kind of hanging over our head right now, and I would really like to be in a good position to do that project justice if we do have to end up paying for a substantial portion of those changes. So again, I like the work you guys do with those. The River Walk is, I think, would be an amazing project, but I'm gonna use your turn of phrase, keep our powder dry. Is that what we're always saying? So I'd like to make sure that stuff is squared away before we start talking about these other projects.
Any other comments?
Where are we at with the dollars? We talked about at the end of the meeting, last meeting, the $250,000 for the roundabout stuff, the $100,000 for downtown, and there was another one I'm forgetting now.
The...
Go H and I.
The roundabout refurbishment was moved into to be determined, and in my discussions with Mr. Maurer, he will continue to have discussions with the people who wanted to provide some support for that. And again, to the degree that something occurs over the next few months with fundraising, we can come back to you and say, look, we have an opportunity. If we can get, you know, 40, 50, 60% of that funded, would the council be willing to use ARPA money? ARPA money, use a 2.1 million dollar excess fund balance? Or, you know, we may still need to keep our powder dry for, for the Clearwells project. So we'll, we'll be working on all those things and they'll be moving pieces, but that's, that's when I'm glad you mentioned that because I had it written down after FERNOW just to get moved into the to be determined category. That's probably the one exception that probably we'd be bringing back sooner if we, if, if Mr. Mauer can get a good fundraising effort started, then certainly we're going to come back with that.
To Councilmember Wrestling, there's other two questions, the bid and Go H and I, those parts, those conversations are taking place. I think at this point, just confirming that.
Happy to report they've taken place
Good.
in both cases. Next week's agenda will have the bids request. They, I gave them a couple shots at working on their application. It, it met what I felt was consistent with the discussion I had with the council. They, I was very pleased to see not only did they identify their three-year plan, but they projected a 2027 budget that doesn't rely on this money, which is really what I was kind of pushing them on. Ms. Nyforth and I had a great discussion with Tom Foidick of Go H and I on Monday. We explained where we were from our standpoint with trying to keep the, the healthy neighborhoods funds for their intended purpose. And I expressed, you know, the council very supportive of, of what they're doing at Go H and I, but we can't use that as a funding source. So I challenged them to come back with something. I gave them actually a copy of the bid's most recent application. I said, this is what I would like to see, a plan that, that you are no longer reliant on city funds. So they understood it. They didn't necessarily love it, but they understood it and put, put it back to them with that challenge. And Mr. Foidick is going to be meeting with his board to have that discussion. And I didn't rush them. I asked them from a cash flow standpoint, they don't need any, they don't need the money on January 1. So they're not in a rush. I said, if you get it to us before Christmas, then we'll, you know, we'll look it over, you know, over those few weeks that we don't have a council meeting. Maybe I tweet, give it back to them like I did with the bid, see what, what adjustments they make so that they understand that the intent is to get them not reliant on city funding to continue their operations. And I think Tom understood it, but didn't love it, but he understands and I think he'll work on that.
Good, good. I'm glad you to hear that report.
I'm glad, thank you for asking that question, Paul.
Good question. Any, any other questions? Just a, just a brief, actually a brief statement to city manager Roloff, finance director Van Gopel, I'll say something more on Tuesday night, I'm sure some of my colleagues will too. I appreciate the efforts on this, this budget, probably the most over my last, you know, five years. The process does keep getting better for those who are new. It's, it's a good process, but I appreciate, especially this year with, but almost a true executive budget, you know, city manager Roloff is making his recommendation to us on what is, what he determines is best to move us forward over the, you know, over the next coming years. Some of the years in the past, we've had some enhancement processes that aren't always the easiest to navigate, sometimes turned into shiny object contests. And so I'm really appreciative of, of this process where we've gotten, you know, how we've gotten here and what you put forward to us and, and did so within the parameters of what the seven of us gave you. You know, the marching orders were, were well followed and much appreciated on my part. So.
And I think I would thank the department heads for their cooperation, understanding how the, the process. And they're, they're here with great interest, just making sure that if there's any questions, they're here to answer them and, and even the ones who aren't here this evening are probably watching very closely. So appreciate that feedback and I'll share that with staff tomorrow morning at our weekly staff meeting.
Good.
Which by the way, we're holding over at the Parks Building, so everybody can get a tour.
Nice.
We'll get you guys over there as well too.
That's good.
We're going to have a, we'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony sometime soon.
Sounds good. If there's nothing else, regarding the budget workshop itself, we can move into discussion and direction to city manager, specifically there's a topic of special assessment options. So we had questions of staff, you know, recently, we've asked them to give us some additional information, additional options. I know in your, in your packets tonight in front of you was a couple, a couple handouts regarding some options available to us. I don't know where council wants to go, we are missing two members, but in terms of a conversation at least, we have an opportunity in front of us to have an open discussion if we'd like to for a little bit here.
Yeah, I got, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and kick it off, there's, this is kind of a free, free exchange here.
With two people missing, we can ram something cool through. Just kidding. No, a couple of questions on the options. First off, thank you for laying, for laying these out. A couple of the options deal with using water, wastewater, storm, water utility costs. And I'm curious if we have, or fees, I'm curious if we have estimates about what that, what these options would do to those fees, because that's obviously going to be really important, if that's going to be an option.
I have a feeling James is going to be parked at the podium for quite a while.
You know, if you want, there is an open chair there.
There's a seat, you can have a seat.
That is one of the things that we have asked elders to work on. You know, they are, we're working on the rate analysis for the budget as initially proposed. And once they were finished with that, then they were going to be looking at what that impact was. Russ, I don't think we've seen that from them yet, but I know they were, because we were going back and forth today with some, some updates and changes on the base analysis. So that is something that, once they got done with the base analysis, then it was really easy to take that base analysis and add that level on. So they were going to do that after they got done with the base analysis.
Cool. Second question, some of the options that talk about a transit utility fee, they list the, the annual impact, estimated impact on residential properties. What would that, do we have numbers for commercial and industrial?
No, because they are so varied based on their uses, just as we're, as I was conversing with the consultant who was developing, had previously developed the model, he was making a couple of updates, just the newest one is where I ran a couple of these options by him, like what would this be? So he gave us just the, the potential impact on the residential because commercial and industrial are so variable based on their usage codes from the IT, the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Okay. Is there any, maybe this is going to be a roster and more question, but I mean, if, if that's something that people are interested in and I, I'm not sure I am, we're going to have to do a really good job of explaining what the impact's going to be, even though they're going to be different, because that's going to scare the heck out of the business community.
I guess
Especially with the vague.
Yeah, if I can chime in, I, I think our impression we got last time is that there's maybe a legal gray area on the transportation utility. Is that kind of accurate? I mean, they've kind of been in and out of, of litigations with multiple other communities, right?
It's the, the case that we're watching the most closely is the Pewalki case.
Sure.
And, and seeing where that, that goes. The Buchanan case didn't really come close to reflecting what we do. And Pewalki is using the same consultant and the exact same methodology that we've been anticipating. So that's why Pewalki is going to be so important. And I would say, I think Jeff Mazanek, the consultant that we've been using, is, is waiting in as many of his clients are, wouldn't you say that's a
He's actually, several have decided to wait, but he's also expressed to me, we were talking actually just last week at the APWA conference, he's had several other communities reach out to him to start the process. So, you know, different communities are reacting differently. Some of them have said, okay, let's just hold off a little bit, but others are saying, no, we, we need to keep moving forward. So it's, it's been a little bit of both, actually.
Sure. And I guess the only reason I brought it up was because I, I still am in favor of trying to get rid of special assessments, but I would hate for us to make a decision and then have it immediately day one turn into a lawsuit and then all the work we put into it, it gets thrown out the window anyway. I guess is kind of where my comments were coming from.
Go first, because I'll
Just from financial standpoint, I think the, trying to not get too far into the weeds, but the difference in some of the cases, especially when you start talking about the city of Nina and some other communities, is how utility is created. And in working with our consultant and using the trip generation basis or using the Institute for Transportation Engineers book as far as number of trips generated by use, seems to be a more fair way of allocating the cost versus maybe what Buchanan and Nina did as far as just, you know, allocating it on a runoff basis or, or another basis. It gets, kind of gets back into some of the things that long-range finance talked about. We had a separate committee that looked at, at transportation utility. They actually came up with another formula and that, the whole thing is looking at it on a fee basis versus a shift basis in property taxes. And I think that's where the courts have struggled with a lot of this and even some of the other state legislatures in, in trying to regulate this is, you know, they look at it just taking it off the taxes and making it kind of de facto a replacement for taxes as opposed to having a nexus on the allocation based on, you know, trips generated.
Sure.
So I think that's been some of the struggle, both internally and externally, when it comes to that point. I don't know if you had any additional comments on that.
I think council member Ford's initial question, you know, what's the impact on business? Because it, we can give a pretty good answer for residential properties. That page says 2 millions in tough would be about $40 a year for residential properties. Straightforward as it can be, you know what your house is going to be, but the businesses because of that, I, and I had a discussion with Rob Kleiman, the president, CEO of the Chamber. And, and Rob has been paying very close attention to this and regularly asking me. And I think we would need to go to the business community and the Chamber is willing to, to be that liaison for that purpose, to talk to them about this and, you know, talk to them about what it would be. I think we'd have examples that we could use and we would certainly give every business the opportunity to say, I don't think I'm like this business, I think I'm like this other business and give them a rough idea of what it would look like. And I think that would be something we would have to do before we came back to you because that's going to impact their, their view on things. The Chamber similarly will have a reaction to the utility pavement part because while there is, there's a great deal of precedent with what James is putting in there with the utility option, of the, the utility pavement option, we know it's going to hit utility, it's just going to up utility rates. We're just transferring it from general obligation debt to, to the utilities. And that is going to have an impact. And the Chamber has been very, as Mr. Ford's aware, Chamber's been very diligent about keeping an eye on our rates. And it's like, well, we're just moving it from one pocket to another. We know there's flaws with that. And I, I think there's discussions about a vehicle registration fee, which, you know, I am not necessarily a fan of because I have concerns about equity. And I think council similarly has doubts about just shifting it all to, to debt, which I think Mr. Van Gopel shares your concerns as well. So we all have hesitancies with every single option. And James could have given you, he gave you 12 options, he could have mixed this up and given you 50, but the, there's a variety of different options and which, what you want to emphasize and not emphasize. Throw it all on GO, that was, remember, that was one of our more simplistic approaches. Doing it all on GO, then that's going to give, you know, heart palpitations to our finance director. But somebody's going to get, somebody's ox is getting gored regardless of which mix you do. So if you just poke a little to all of them, that has an impact too. So I think with the transportation fee, we have to do a significant outreach program with the business community.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, go first and then Lindsay after, and I'll go with some point.
Yeah, just looking at the options here sheet, 12 more options. I don't know, did you guys have like a party or something that came up with all these things? And the person that came up with the most options got like a booby prize or something?
I really liked
I'm looking at some of the stuff. Yeah, but so, I mean, it was fantastic. I did a great job on coming up with all these options, giving us choices, that's great. But the thing I worry about is, while this is great information, how does this affect the staff? And I'm, I'm not picking one option or, you know, number two or five or 10 or whatever. In most of these, it appears that there is a lot of mechanics going on here. Does this mean we have to hire new staff? Is this another layer of government we're going to have to hire? Do you need to be a Philadelphia attorney to figure out how some of this stuff works? And if you start charging people more in fees, you're going to have some people up at this podium with faces very red, believing that they are being overcharged in fees now. And you can make an argument they are. And now you're going to start charging more fees and the fees for the utilities, you cannot write off on your taxes. But the property taxes, if I remember correctly, I don't know if you can do it yet, you can write that off. So I don't know if that was a question or a statement, if you can just maybe comment on that.
I, I certainly not a tax attorney, but I do not believe special assessments are eligible for, for that write-off either. As far as the impacts to staff, I know in, in looking at this, I, I do not see that any of these require the addition of any staff. In fact, you know, any, any process that we go down to eliminate, you know, the calculation of special assessments is going to relieve some workload. You know, for example, you know, the, the sidewalk rehab program itself, you know, that touches 2,500 parcels roughly on average. And depending on how many of those are condos, you know, Russ's finance staff might be issuing anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 invoices annually for that program. You know, so again, it's not only having to generate those invoices, but then, you know, having to issue them and then follow up on them. And so implementing any of these options to eliminate, you know, the, these special assessments is not going to be an add to staff.
Right. I understand on the sidewalk side, but some of these had in here, the, the homeowner has to come out and fill out some kind of form, has to deal with title companies.
That, that was on the deferment side of it, not on the replacement side of it.
Yeah.
You know, again, that was some of the questions we had gotten from council as well. Are, is there a way we can go down some of this deferment instead of replacement? So that's why, you know, we looked at a couple of communities that we were aware of that had things. So that was on, you know, that deferment side was, that was certainly more, going to be more involved and more intensive, you know, because it does require review, it requires, you know, the property owner submitting their, their income information, you know, so yeah, those deferment options certainly do add
And people don't want to do that. They just simply don't want to do that.
Right. You know, some, some will, some won't, but you know, the deferment options absolutely add a level of, of workload to staff, whereas the replacement options I do not believe would.
Okay, so in your opinion, if you take any one of these, pick whichever one you want, or you got the city of Madison and Eau Claire, I'm a proponent of that, that floor plan that, I don't know, whoever came up with that, I thought it was fantastic. To me, that sounds very simple. You can explain that to someone, they're going to understand that the first 5,000 is gone, the city's paying that, or the taxpayers are paying that and whatever, you know, whatever else is, they have to pay and they do that in a normal sense. So would I be correct in looking at all of these different proposals, that that would be the simplest maybe for the taxpayer to understand and get through?
The feedback we received over the summer, which led to this listing of options, was based on feedback we heard from council, that a majority of the council felt eventual permanent relief, permanent elimination was, was the preferred goal. So the floor option was really more of a way to reduce, not eliminate. So that would be a discussion for the seven of you, but we, those options are still there. We didn't present those because we were giving you some options for elimination of street assessments and sidewalk assessments.
Well, we're still coming up with a policy. No matter what it is, it's going to be a policy.
Yeah. So if you wanted to do a partial, then those types of discussions would be very appropriate. But that's, but we were focusing in this analysis on complete elimination of street and sidewalk specials.
To answer your question, council member, from a staff perspective, I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't inform you that my, one of my divisions is utility billing folks. And right now, the utility billing folks are dealing with, you know, answering questions on water, sanitary sewer and some storm water, but the ERUs is established by on water, sanitary sewer, and some stormwater, but the ERUs is established by the engineering department. So there has been some concern with the people that do the monthly billings for you, for our current utility costs, that if we added another, we'll do whatever City Council wants, but if you add another level, i.e. a vehicle, transportation, utility payment, there's going to be some impact on billing personnel in my department, dealing with customers' complaints, calls, questions. And to be honest with you, they're not jumping up and down with joy about taking on another utility and another component to that bill that gets sent out to customers on a monthly basis. I'm just giving you all the feedback I've gotten from my staff, and we certainly respect your discussion on policy and, you know, what's best for the community. But there is some reservations from my billing staff about the impact on dealing with customers' calls and questions. And to date, we haven't worked out all the implementation issues from a technology and a billing side of things. I think we still have to work through some of that and that deserves some discussion if Council decides to go to transportation utility, because there is going to be an impact. But to date, we have not talked about any additional staff, but we talked about reallocation of expenses. When we looked at a transportation utility, we looked at some of those overhead costs and I worked with James and his crew and our outside consultant on, you know, what are some of those overhead costs and how do we build that into our calculations? So some of that was looked at, but it didn't include adding new people, it just took and redirected people's efforts.
And one of the other debates that we had was, how did this ripping off the SCAB or whatever, to completely eliminate assessments? If that's the philosophy, okay, but am I correct in saying that if you're going to eliminate assessments, we have assessments to the tune of over nine million dollars that are in arrears? That if you're going to remove assessments, then you need to remove assessments and pay that nine million dollars for the people that have assessments. Am I correct?
You are correct with the nine, it's like 9.7 million dollars, but I wouldn't say, I wouldn't use the term in arrears because they are current. When we do assessments, we spread out assessments over 10, 15-year period, and we have some that are spread out shorter, some longer. So they're scheduled payments. They are outstanding assessments that will be paid over the next one to 15 years. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the term arrears.
Poor choice of wording.
Yeah, I would use the term outstanding.
I'm just saying they've been built.
They are outstanding.
There's individuals that pay that in full, like day one, right?
Correct. They have the option of paying an assessment day one, actually within 60 to 90 days and no interest charge. But when we do charge interest, it's to kind of offset, number one, our billing and collection costs. So there's a little bit of a factor in there. We've talked about that with long-range finances. What's the appropriate outstanding interest charge? Number one, it's based on current economic conditions. Number two, it's also based on what the cost of money is to the city. Because if we borrow money today, we might have to pay four, 5% interest in today's market. But I've seen that where that number is a lot higher or lower.
Yeah. And the only reason I bring it up is because, I mean, if we wanted to pay off what people have due right now, then we would also have to have a discussion on sending rebates back to people that completely paid off their, I'm uncomfortable with both. I think, I think both is a discussion we shouldn't, I mean, we can talk about whatever we want up here, but I'm not in favor of either, but.
Yeah, the 9.7 is what's outstanding right now. I, and once, once they come off our books, I don't, I don't have a historical number of who's totally paid off and what that total payoff is, because we don't simply keep that record. We keep a record of our outstanding receivable, and once the receivable's been paid, it goes, you know, into the, not circular file, but the closed file.
The paid file.
I think Lindsay had something, did you not?
I think most of my questions have been asked. I think one consideration I had was similar to Councilmember Eslinger, but just more focused on, of these options, you mentioned the transportation utility having the most burden on staff, and you mentioned the cost after operation. So I was thinking through, you answered this already, but what that additional cost or admin burden might be for staff in implementing any of these options, but I'm supportive of, you know, if we do need to look at that for adding staff or whatever that might take. My main goal with this is to completely replace special assessments. I think that's, that's the goal, to provide relief for residents, and I'm appreciative of all of these options because it's a more diversified approach. We have lots of different ways we can do that. And I think my only other question, but I think it's been answered, if it's possible to have any, kind of show what the impact could be if we go with an option that has the utilities, so the water, wastewater, stormwater utilities, what might that impact look like on the rates? I don't know if that's, that's possible, but, yeah.
No, good question so far. I like, I like the discussion. I got to say, I'm, I'm still a big proponent of the utility, but I know that it's, it's a wait-and-see game on that one. It's got to be right, because to Councilmember Stevens' point, the worst possible scenario is we do something and then we have to stop doing it and try to go back or pivot. And in this particular case, it will not go well. So that, that's my, that's my worst-case scenario is, you know, if we go down a path that, that we end up having to stop and then it automatically just falls on debt or some other mechanism. So I appreciate the options. I appreciate how you laid them out. Quite honestly, there's, you know, always a good saying, you know, everything in moderation. You know, if we, you know, are reasonable in our approach in terms of, you know, the funding sources, it doesn't necessarily hit, hit one, you know, all at one time. In the end, the taxpayers, the ratepayers, they will pay for, you know, they will pay for the bill. It's just a matter of how they pay for it and who pays for it. I don't want to create any sort of illusions that, you know, taxpayers aren't going to pay for this. 100%, they are. It's just a matter of who and how, how much and in what fashion. So I like some of the options here. My own preference is still complete elimination of the, the special assessments. That shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. Currently, given what we have here, some of the discussions, I'm, I'm with City Manager Roloff in the fact that the vehicle registration fee is not equitable. It's a, it's a regressive tax, it's a regressive fee, it hits some of the most disadvantaged, usually the hardest. But I also understand that everybody does have, you know, a share to pay on this. And so a modest one would be something that I'm okay with, along with combining some, some utility, you know, a possible policy change within that utilities cover a certain amount of this, whether it's a four-foot, six-foot, eight-foot. My one question I think I have, you used the word precedent before, I don't remember if it was Russ or James, in terms of that there is precedent to having utilities cover some of this. I just, we haven't actually talked about it much. In my five years, we haven't talked about that possible avenue much, but just confirming that there is precedent and that within the PSC in terms of our, our whole, our process, that they would, that they're okay with that addition, that they, that would be okay with that addition.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with some of our engineering consultants, in particular related to water utility projects that have had to go through the Public Service Commission process. And, you know, that is where, you know, I've gotten the feedback from them that on those projects, you know, the, the commission has approved a reasonable assumption. Generally, a reasonable assumption is going to be somewhere around six to eight-foot trench width, because if you're installing, you know, an eight, 10, 12-inch water main, by the time you get to the top of that trench, you're looking at a six to eight-foot pavement patch. So when those projects were on complete reconstructs where, you know, the, the water utility portion of that, say, needed to go through the construction authorization process from Public Service Commission, the consultants that I checked with have said yes, the commission has been supportive of the utility paying a reasonable share of that pavement restoration.
Okay. And that's one of the things, you know, for those that at home, our current process, or I guess our current practice, actually is probably the right word, is really that we do complete reconstructions. We don't do a, we don't do, we do a lot more of that than we do of just surface only. And so it tends to be a driver of our projects. You know, for example, you know, El Goma Street last year, we had to do a complete reconstruction of the entire thing for 10 million bucks, all in.
Right. We generally do not just do a street resurfacing project. If we're doing a, if we're doing a street surfacing project, we're more than likely doing all of the utilities underground, because if we don't, you know, we'd be at a situation as a community where we were several decades ago, where, yep, the street got paved and the next year we're digging it up because the water main blew up. And the year after that, we're digging it up because the sewer collapsed. So we're taking a very holistic approach at it. You know, right now, when we do a complete street reconstruction, the utilities are not paying any of that pavement restoration. It's, the pavement restoration is following our street special assessment policy, which, you know, for a residential street up to that 32-foot max is a third, third, third. You know, so the utilities are not picking up a share. If we have a utility-only project, for example, like we had on Hollister and Clark's Court and Oak Street and Beach, you know, in that particular case, because it was a water utility-only replacement because of failing mains, you know, the utility did have to pay for those pavement patches.
No, so I think, you know, given what's, the conversations that have kind of taken place over the last several months amongst this council, it does seem likely that maybe, you know, a path forward most likely is going to, you know, include multiple revenue streams. I don't see a singular one, you know, just winning out immediately. And debt is really, really undesirable to me, just putting it on debt only. I'd have a hard time going for that. I think there needs to be a revenue, you know, an identified revenue source to make sure it's covered, so it's not just piling on debt after debt after debt. And for me, to get to the number, I think, you know, at a minimum, you know, I like your six-foot number, you know, your six-foot trench and, and a 40, $45 vehicle registration fee puts you just under $4 million. I think there's a discussion that, I think it's a reasonable discussion to have that some of this go, that does a little bit go into debt? Possibly. Or does it just, is it straight levy, that it's levy-supported? You know, whether it's sidewalks, because that's an annual thing. I think those are reasonable things to talk about, but those are just my, my random thoughts on it. Mr. Ford's got the.
Yeah, I'm the only one using my butt? No, I think those are good, those are good points. And yeah, I'm with you. If we were able to get rid of the entire thing, I think we got to do it in a way that spreads the burden. And even, I'm right, a reasonable debt that's an investment in our infrastructure is okay with me. I'm not okay with just throwing $4 million on debt. As I, as I always do, I'd be remiss if I didn't, I didn't point out that I do think we could explore, none of this stuff works, the scalpel approach in addition to the machete approach. And that's, you know, the discussion I brought up over and over again about the ability to cap nightmare assessments. And that's premised on the, the policy problem being a handful of these assessments that are pricing people out of their house and home. I still think that's the most inequitable thing we do in our special assessment policy. So I maintain an interest, I'm not sure if my colleagues do, but in being able to see, so we can price that out, you know, a list of what our assessments are this year, last year, just an overall list, so that we can see if there was a number we kept that, what that would cost us. I think if we did that, we'd want to combine that with some type of option like Eau Claire does with deferment. I don't think it'd be something that'd be very used, but I think it would be an option for people that are facing a crisis again, where they get a bill, they just can't pay it. They have a choice. They lose their house. Well, under the full defer option, they'd have the ability to defer it in perpetuity, goes on the lien, gets paid when they sell their home. I think there's value to that. I don't think it'd be very well-used. So I sympathize with, with Councilman Eskelner's concern, that would be a bureaucratic nightmare, but it would be one of those last resort things to ensure we're not picking and choosing and kind of screwing over individuals without, you know, not on purpose obviously, but it happens. And I also think we can reform, look at other communities and see what are those situations that are resulting in these nightmare assessments? And how do our ordinances differ? Corner lots and things that we've explored in the past. But I do think there's a plate of small reforms we could make to take some of those off the table. And I think probably the greatest advantage to this type of scalpel approach is that it would enable us to also have a pot of money there, whether that comes from our, our operating surplus, whether that comes from levy, whatever we set it up. If we set up a fund, I think we would have the ability to look back five years and say that, okay, there's another, here's a group of people that have, you know, under our current rules, that have these really high assessments that are over our cap, and maybe we can provide some tiered relief, right? If you did it last year, get a certain percentage return. Last year, before that, you know, you stepped down. So I do think that there are more nuanced options that we can explore if we do not agree on getting rid of them in perpetuity. And I just hope that we encourage, I encourage staff to, to look into that, and I encourage my colleagues to keep looking into that, because I think that's really important. My greatest fear is that we have, like other people have said up here, that we, maybe we agree that TUF's going to be part of it, but then that gets struck down by the Supreme Court or, you know, legislature says, not that they would ever do this, right? What they're doing right now, right, with stormwater utility fees, right? I mean, this is going to be challenged. There's going to be, I think that, I don't see the TUF lasting one way or another. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't pursue it, but I worry about that. And same deal with the wheel tax. We might do a wheel tax, and I'm not necessarily against that as a partial approach, but if all of a sudden all the commercial users go and register their cars elsewhere, you know, that becomes a problem long-term. So I just, I hope that we were able to take a nuanced approach as well in our plate of options. So thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I didn't anticipate a miracle solution coming out of this meeting. By the last, you know, I didn't think anybody else did either. Continued discussion is good. I think it's, it's just something we continue to move forward, forward with, I guess, at this point. The positive thing is, you know, realistically, nothing impacts the budget that we have to approve next Tuesday. The project's going to move forward. We have a funding source up until the time of which, you know, we decide to change our minds. The project's continuing to move forward and, and staff continues to, you know, follow the current policy that we have in place. I don't know next steps in terms of when we want to continue discussion, or how, you know, what that looks like, but if there's any thoughts, feel free to start sharing.
I, this is going to be a shock, but I'm not supporting any suggestion of eliminating it all in any way, shape, or form.
Good. I did hear a little partial potential support. I'm using potential. I thought, I thought I heard a comment.
I'm in, I'm in favor of changing the policy, but I'm not in favor of slapping the face of those people that are going to be paying 15 years while they're going to start now paying for the other people that are going to get their roads done, not for free, but at a fantastically reduced price.
Okay.
As the proud owner of two special assessments, I appreciate that you don't want to slip me in the face.
And I had one of those special assessments at around, I think it was 20 grand.
Yeah, yeah. Again, well, as I said, I'm going to keep beating a dead horse. I maintain an interest that I'd like to see those numbers. That's huge for.
I think we can give you that, because I.
And I know other people have to agree too, so it can't just be me asking for it, but if other people want it, I think that would be really important.
I think we have that number, and we can provide that to you in terms of what we thought the, the large residential assessment, because that's really the issue. Because commercial properties are going to have, you know, many assessments, they're going to be over 20,000 on a really regular basis. Residential, not, not that many. So, and I think that's what I told Mike, and I think we can take a look at at least a snapshot of those last couple of years. Is that what you did?
Yeah, the, the analysis spreadsheet I had, I was working on had the last five or six years, and, you know, the numbers that are in your handout were based on the estimates for 2024. Those were not backwards-looking, those were based on the 2024 estimates.
Cool.
That was one thing I forgot to mention earlier, but the table you have is based on estimates for 2024, because we have not done any of the calculations yet.
Like what Mike talked about, that's a partial reduction strategy. The one that Paul was advocating, the floor, is also a partial strategy. It's just where, yeah, if you want to. It's just where, if you want to, if you want to eliminate them completely, then you want to ignore those two strategies. But if you want to get there this way, that's one way to do it. I guess what I suggest is you're going to reach an awkward silence part in this evening. And, you know, I think what we can do is take some of these comments and see what other information we can provide you. You know, we're, we're slicing and dicing this every which way possible, because I still hear consensus that you want to do something, it's just what do you do is the real, is the real challenge. And so we'll keep providing you, but I, I think we have that information about the, the ceiling cap.
What I'm going to ask is that, this was put on Tuesday's agenda under this council discussion, allows us just an opportunity, you know, we did have, Carl was out, Lakeisha was able to hear part of it. I know Joe had to, had to cruise out, he had another commitment, so just to allow everybody the chance to, to either have a follow-up to the discussion, if we could have that on Tuesday's agenda for, for us to have a placeholder.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.